I apologize for having to postpone the start of it for thirty-five minutes, but one member of the council, whose name will go unmentioned, is the cause of that. He probably got hung up in the traffic on Bear Valley Road or some such thing. Secondly, I want to comment that Frank Williams has brought to my attention that the materials that our staff, our department heads generated as a result of the Rose Institute presentation was not delivered, wasn't mailed out until apparently Thursday. Therefore, they just got the materials in some instances this morning. They've had no opportunity to go through it. I think that's a fair concern. We did say at the workshop where the Rose Institute presented that we would make our materials available by the Thursday preceding the workshop that was scheduled for last Monday, which was canceled because Mr. Roberts was in China. Why they didn't go out then, I don't know, but I think it's fair that the BIA be given a reasonable amount of time to respond. Now, we were going to send them out on the Thursday preceding Monday. They went out this Thursday. So, at the conclusion of this meeting, we'll, the council will chat as to when we want to reconvene this issue. I would say that it won't be any later than a relatively short workshop preceding the council meeting two weeks hence. That should give BIA plenty of time to go through the materials that have been generated by our staff. With that prelude, no matter where we are in this process today, we will have to terminate at ten fifteen. Some of us have a very important meeting that Mr. Sullivan has postponed to accommodate. It cannot be postponed again involving the auditors, and so we can't go beyond ten fifteen. That meeting starts at ten thirty. As with all meetings, the first item of business is public comment. That's an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on any subject within our jurisdiction and responsibility. General rule, under public comment, we will not respond because we don't know, we've had no opportunity to prepare for what the public comment may be. We ask you to fill out one of these white cards that are available in the foyer, pass the card up to the city clerk. In that way, whatever you may have to share with us if we need to communicate with you in the future, we'll have your contact information. If we're going to schedule an item, or if we're going to ask for additional information, or provide you with information, we will then be in a position to do that. If you speak under public comment, under, under one of these cards, your time limit is three minutes per speaker. And with that, I have two cards that have been presented, the first of which is Frank Williams, who indicates he wants to speak on item two, not public comment, and then Jim Tatum, who doesn't, I only got one. You want to speak on item two. Can I mark your card accordingly? Though with that in mind, is there anyone in the audience who intended to address the city council, not under item two, which is the DIF fee issue, but under item one, which is public comment? Anyone who had intended to speak under public comment but failed to turn in a card? With that, then we will go to item two, which is discussion and possible action regarding development impact fees. I have suggested to Mr. Roberts that he provide a status report and a summary of where we are in this dialogue, in this discussion, and to summarize, or at least put in perspective, the views and the comments that have been generated by our senior staff in response to the Rose Institute study and the comments that were made previously. Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
That'll be dependent upon how much time we have. If, if there's an opportunity for some dialogue today, we'll have it, but that's the reason that we'll have one more workshop. I'm, I'm not sure that we'll have enough time to adequately accommodate what I suspect will be a need for more dialogue. Yes, I, I, in response to your comments, which I think is a fair criticism, that we had not timely provided the material to you, and I agree with that, that we will not be in a position to act Tuesday night. My guess is we'll do one of two things at the conclusion of today. We will either continue it to a special meeting between, sometime between now and next Tuesday, or the furthest date out that we would continue it would probably be till five o'clock on Tuesday, two weeks from tomorrow, which will be our next meeting after tomorrow night. But with that, I'm going to turn to Mr. Roberts in his role as the CEO of the City of Victorville, and ask him to provide preliminary comments and a summary with regard to the department head workup on this matter. Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I would characterize the input received from our senior department heads as falling into three categories. One is there was some brief response and analysis of the numbers in the Rose Institute study made by our city engineer, Sean McGlade. And then, secondly, there was a question that came from the city council. It, our understanding is that impacts to fire and police, the council has already forewarned that there would be no cuts in impacts of safety issues, and that also transportation costs are regulated by state government and folks like Sandbag, and that we have very little discretion taking any action there because it would result in loss of other funding, transportation funding sources that are controlled by Sandbag. And so primarily, that only left two categories, which is park and recreation and public facilities. And there was a question at the last meeting, whether or not there were any federal or state regulations mandating minimum levels of park and recreation facilities that we would run afoul of if we were to make a cut. And our director of Park and Rec Community Services, John Gargan, is prepared to answer that question. And then the third category, I would characterize, were really more, I would say, opinions regarding the current status of our city with respect to the amount of low and moderate income housing that currently exists in our city, the relationship between retail, commercial development, and rooftops. And I think that's really information that is more just general reading, not direct response necessarily to the Rose Institute study. And I think those are subjects that can just be read casually in the package. And so, and then I have some comments also on the Rose Institute study. And so, if I, with council's pleasure, if I could call up Sean McGlade to just briefly address the numbers, portions of the Rose Institute, so that everybody can hear those.
Mr. McGlade?
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, members of the council. In, in looking at the study put together by the Rose Institute, the, there was an apparent analysis that showed that the city would benefit by reducing the DIF fee by the amount allocated to the parks and recreation and fire, police portions of the fee. The analysis was based upon the assumption that the city takes in somewhere around thirty thousand dollars per rooftop in collecting fees for its use. The major portion of that fee is actually passed through to schools, Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority, and also hard costs, which are building permits, where inspectors are needed to go out and perform a task at cost to the city. When you separate out the pure capital portion of the fee and that, of the development impact fee, and that's what it's collected for, and you reinsert the numbers with that reduced fee, in lieu of a thirty thousand dollar fee, it came down to a little over twenty-three thousand dollars, and then run it through the same analysis, it turns out the city ends up with a much greater loss than the Rose Institute study had indicated. If the assumption is that two-hundred-and-seventy-three permits are resulting from the increase, are resulting from a decrease in the fee, my calculation shows that the city would suffer a loss of about four-point-eight, four-point-nine million dollars. The, the rest of the analysis then goes on to show the benefits derived from the extra rooftops and indicate a, a revenue to the city of some one-point-four, one-point-five million My analysis indicates that the net loss would be in the order of three-point-three, three-point-four million dollars, based on the assumption of the two-hundred-and-seventy-three lots. Who knows what that number should be? So, what I wanted to do then was to present what that loss range would be, given the additional, an assumption of additional lots of anywhere from fifty to five-hundred. So, in the chart that I provided, you can see that with a fifty additional lots, the loss to the city would be about six-point-eight million dollars. And we would need to run out to five-hundred additional permits before we get into a break-even situation. That's the bare bones of the analysis that I put together.
And there was a correction by somebody else that indicated that two-seventy, two-hundred-and-seventy lots was not an accurate number, that in fact, it was a factor of ten. It should have been twenty-seven, or thirty, or thirty-nine?
Well, I think it might have been Bill Webb who indicated that that is reality. I simply went with the numbers in the Rose Institute, because I, I just simply identify a flaw in the rationale, and I wanted the city council to realize that. So, just using their numbers with that correction, my analysis indicates a much greater loss than the Rose Institute.
Other questions or comments from members of the council?
You had another one that, and I, I let, read your analysis on the value of commuting versus staying at home, and the number that came up in the Rose Institute was like seventy-six thousand on per house, and your number came up to about fifty-three thousand.
That's correct.
I, actually, I, I think there is a diminished return to that, and I do accept your argument on that. I think that the, the net value is closer to a fifty-three, fifty-thousand-dollar pick-a-number. Stay-at-home versus going down the hill benefit, so.
Yes, that was more of a comment. The, the price of gas is the, the biggest thing when, when, you know, a first-time home buyer is deciding whether to buy a home in the high desert, or try and buy a home in the Rancho Cucamonga area. And I don't think he will do the economic analysis that the Rose Institute did to come up with a seventy-five, seventy-six thousand dollar number. I think he's going to look at the, the monthly pay tech and, and see what he can afford out of that for that extra gas.
Further questions or comments from members of the council?
Sean, one question. In, in your, your report, you state that we've already expended more than, than we have collected, so have borrowed money from somewhere, and needs to be paid back.
Um, yeah, that, it gets very difficult to analyze just a cash flow for DIF, but certainly, if you just look back a few years and look at the kind of projects that we have built in more recent years, I think we were over sixty-five million dollars. And the idea of DIF is that you're not collecting for the future, but you're collecting for an entire list of projects. You start working at those projects, you need to keep collecting. It's, it's like a mortgage. You need to make those payments. And if you don't make the payments at the time, you can't go back. Revenue that is lost.
So, the money that, that we're expending comes from other sources, and we need to pay that back? Is that what, is that what you're saying there?
Um, I think that would be a question more for the finance director, but, but certainly there is a huge expenditure, and that expenditure, in the analysis that, that the DIF study puts together, has to be collected a little bit for every project over fifteen years. When we stop collecting that, that's money, that's lost revenue, clearly. And we've got some big projects that we have built, including City Hall here, thirty million-plus dollars.
Further questions or comments?
Sean, before we go next department, I, I want to make sure that I understand your analysis and your comments. On the first page, second paragraph, about two-thirds of the way down, you talk about a comparison between what I understand to be the Rose Institute's calculation of loss to the city at one-point-one-five-six million versus your calculation, that it would be four-point-eight-nine million. Difference between the two calculations of three-point-seven-three-four for one year. Am I reading your numbers correctly? What would be the single most focused reason for that disparity in terms of the way you did your calculation versus the way Rose Institute did theirs?
It's simply the mathematics of looking at thirty thousand dollars per rooftop, per permit, times the one-thousand-and-ninety in the, I think that was the two-thousand-and-seven total permit number, and the argument that additional homes would be created by reducing the fee, so that two-hundred-and-seventy-three additional homes at the reduced fee. And when you realize that the, the thirty thousand dollar fee is not an actual fee that the city collects, and you adjust that to, to the actual fee that the city collects for its development impacts, that same calculation comes out with a much greater disparity between the, the ten-thousand-and-ninety lot number and the additional two-hundred-and-seventy-three, which would be the thirteen-sixty-three number.
So, is it your position that part of the difference in the methodology is that you have excluded from the gross number, the pass-through fees for schools and BBWRA?
Correct.
And that it's your understanding, at least in analyzing the Rose Institute report, that they have left those pass-through fees in?
That's right.
Now, although we're going to have Mr. Webb come up shortly and speak to the number, you've, you've used the number that was in the Rose Institute to, I'm assuming, of two-hundred-and-seventy new homes?
That's right.
Mr. Webb's calculation is that it would only be either twenty-seven, or perhaps even only twenty-five. How would that skew the numbers, one way or the other, from your opinion? Or would it?
With, it's going to have a change. I, I'd need to run those numbers again to, to, all I was doing was simply using the numbers already in the Rose Institute so that we could compare apples with apples.
You've made no, no adjustment, made no, no adjustment in your calculations to try and address the discrepancy that comes from Mr. Webb's calculation?
That's correct.
Yours is focused solely on the Rose Institute?
That's correct.
On page two of your report, first line after the bar graph, you say, "To break even, we would need to sell one-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety permits." Could you flesh that out a little bit for me?
Well, there's a diminishing loss. The more permits that you sell, the less the loss becomes. So, by the time you add an additional five-hundred permits instead of two-hundred-and-seventy-three, you reach a point where the benefits indicated in the Rose Institute and the loss, per my calculation, my adjusted calculation, will match each other, and there would be a, a break-even point.
Now, although it would require Mr. Roberts' concurrence, would you be willing to sit down with the gentleman from the Rose Institute that did the study and discuss the different methodology that has occurred?
Sure, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Roberts? Thank you, Mr. McGlade. Want to call somebody else?
Well, I think at this time it'd be appropriate to call Mr. Webb up to explain his analysis of the numbers of new permits expected to be issued.
Good morning, Ms. Mayor, council members. Regarding the, I, I don't know that it's a discrepancy in numbers, as the Rose Institute report assumed last year's numbers and followed that assumption through, as did the city engineer take last year's numbers and carry those over and recalculate. What I looked at was just the reality of this year's numbers. And we had January, February, and March complete at the type, at the time that, that I sent the correspondence. And for the first three months of, of two thousand and eight, our permits for single-family dwelling units was thirty-nine. When compared to last year's first three months, and single-dwelling units of four-twenty-six, we're operating at nine percent of last year's counts, as far as single-family residential goes. So, what I did was I took their number of two-hundred-and-seventy-three, took nine percent of it, and, and just made the statement that we should be discussing twenty-five homes at this point, additional homes, not two-hundred-and-seventy-three additional homes, with the current state. And if we're looking at the economy now, probably carrying out through the year is what we're being told, and what we're being told by the, by the building industry as well, as economists, then I think those numbers are more valid. So, again, I just took our current, our current permits, they're nine percent of last year, took nine percent of two-seventy-three, and we're at nine percent. Since this time, we also, in order to prepare for the July budget, we also looked at our overall operating costs, or our overall revenues for, for the development department, and it's fairly consistent with this. Although commercial is, is running at eighty percent of last year, which is better, and, and that, that basically sustains the arguments that commercial is following the rooftops to a certain extent, our overall permits, departmental, department-wise, is operating at ten-point-one percent.
Questions or comments of Mr. Webb from members of the council?
Bill, let me ask you a couple of questions. You've made a recommendation that if the council were to either suspend, or reduce, or whatever, DIF fees, which is the request of the BIA, that it automatically expire in six months?
Correct.
And then you go on to say that the, that you strongly suggest that the discounts not be applied to those developers that have an outstanding balance on other projects and refuse to pay, or pay up. Could you kind of elaborate on, on what drives those comments?
Um, well, first, on the outstanding balance issue, we've had a difficult time over the last, I'd say, six months collecting from some developers. There are still some developers in, there are some that have paid, and there are some that are still outstanding. The way our department operates is that we charge for the plan check review at the time, and fees, and, and those fees at the time of, at the time of pulling permits. And what's occurred is many developers have just let their permits expire. Well, when their permits expire, we are still due the, the cost for plan checkers that have been doing the work for the past year, doing first, second, third, fourth plan check, and we still bill. However, some developers will walk away from that, and we have very little recourse. Some have suggested we lean their properties. Again, that doesn't, that doesn't really help with, with our funding or our budgeting. We also have a developer right now that is outstanding, and is, we are still issuing permits and still doing CFOs on one property, where they're, where they're going to, for instance, I don't know that this is the case, but let's say he has a multifamily project, which is in better shape, and he's pulling permits and getting CFOs on that. And our attorney says, even though we have outstanding balances on three or four or five other properties that he refuses to pay, there's nothing we can do. So, we are still sending out additional manpower and, and taking care of his one property when the other ones are, are owed to us. So, my only concern was in order to get some leverage, or the only issue was in order to gain some leverage with those few developers, of which I, I don't believe any are here this morning, those few developers that have outstanding balances, is to exclude them from this until the time of which their outstanding balance is zero, in an effort to try to encourage them to pay up. The first suggestion that I had was based just upon my experience here over the past five years, and, and dealing and the negotiations that have gone on between the city, and between city staff and the BIA. And that would be that, I think it's, I think it's a, a fair statement to say that we missed a large part of the boom last time around during negotiations and implementing DIF hikes in stages. We kind of got behind the eight ball, and it was hard to catch up, and frankly, we did not catch up. By the time the cycle hit the peak, we may have been where we were supposed to be, but the, the cycle has taken, has taken a dive. So, we missed out on all of the revenue that, that was necessary during the increase of the boom. My suggestion to avoid that would be that if there was a decrease or a cut, as suggested by the BIA, that there be a time set for expiration, so that there won't be these ongoing negotiations again at that period. And that's, again, I suggested four to six months, just to throw it out there, so that the council wouldn't be in a position of having to make a determination to end this program that would automatically end at a, at a, at a certain date given. And, and those were the two suggestions.
Bill, you responded to some comments that were provided by Keith Metzler in the Economic Development End, and by John Becker, the fire chief. And I'm not going to ask you to defend Keith Metzler's comments, but you seem, in part at least, to concur, where in one of your responses, you say rooftops are great, but not if they don't house spenders of quality goods, and especially not if they're empty. And then you go on to say, if we are to subsidize anyone, it seems the wise thing to do would be to help build commerce, sales tax, along with industry jobs. And that seems to be in response to Keith Metzler's comment, which is similar in nature. Could you, as a planner, could you kind of expand on that?
Um, as you know, I've been in full support over the last several years of, of rooftops, and still am, and of the, the building industry, and still am. We did get to a point where I, and just basically from my professional, from my professional perspective, not being an economic development expert, where the surplus exceeded the need, and that seems obvious. And again, by inheriting code enforcement, I definitely see the foreclosure rate occurring continuously, and the issues that come with that, as well as the, the council's issues that have, or the city's issues that have been brought to the council recently with, with renting, with the, you know, with the surplus, as I said, of probably un-owner-occupied housing, and the problems it can bring. The statement there, basically, there's two statements, and, and I'm speaking to one right now, is that it seemed, it was hard for me to understand the need to assist bringing more rooftops when we have a surplus, and they are either empty, or they're housing renters in homeowner-occupied neighborhoods. We're kind of, it just seems like we're paying for trouble. That was, that's just a common sense, as well as planning perspective. Now, from a planning perspective and development, I know for a fact, having dealt with a lot of commerce at prior places, and a huge amount here, that they each have different needs as far as, as far as what they're looking for to come, to come into the city. And as far as their radius studies, you, typically, they're looking at, they're looking at population, they're looking at-
But one moment, Mike has to put five dollars in the kitty to the city clerk. It was his rule that if a cellphone goes off during a meeting, that the person, the offending party pays five bucks. Mr. Rothschild?
I will. Get on with the meeting.
The, the main criteria-
Two times.
Ten dollars. Get off.
Although, although every, every, every commercial project has a different radius. Some look at a three-mile, some look at a five-mile, some look at ten-mile. Perhaps the big box probably look at ten-mile. some look at a five-mile, some look at ten-mile, perhaps the big box probably look at ten-mile, regional stores. They're looking at, the two main criteria that they look at is going to be population, obviously, are the counts there, and the second is going to be income levels. Not having studied our current income levels, this is just a reaction to discussion about affordable housing, bringing down the cost, making it affordable for people to go down the hill. It might be great for them to go down the hill to work, but if they're going down the hill to work at a Walmart instead of at a professional office, they're not necessarily bringing a lot of income to the community, and they're not necessarily contributing to the criteria necessary to bring quality development to town. As a case in point, there's, you know, brand-new developments in Hesperia, and ninety-nine-cent stores are moving into those on Main Street. And we're seeing similar types of things happening now with the downturn. The concern of that, of course, is, and to what extent this council wishes to take the city in, that if you're looking for higher development commercial or higher-quality commercial, you're going to want to be looking for higher-quality housing, as well as greater incomes that go along with those housing, and education levels also. And affordable housing doesn't typically bring that into the marketplace. So you're going to be looking at strip malls with lower-quality businesses there. Sales tax revenue might be comparable, I don't know. Again, it is just a comment out there for you to have, and as we're planning future development throughout the city.
Before you leave, Mr. DeBorten asked, the comment that Bill made about some builders who have projects that they've essentially either walked away from or simply not doing anything, yet were required to spend money, and I think the suggestion was, can we differentiate between people that I would call in a delinquent status in terms of the application of fees? Is that something that is within the purview of the government code?
I don't think we can. I don't think we can differentiate based on delinquency.
So we're stuck. Could you have someone in your shop--
A research academic, sure, yeah.
It seems unfair that we have to subsidize in one fashion or another a process where people can beat the system. We expend the money, and then they walk away. I just, that does not seem fair.
I definitely get an answer for you definitively on that.
I have a question. Bill, how do you change that? How do you turn it around? And I know this is, you know, it's a major problem, but how do you change it from to get upscale housing and all these things we're all talking about? That'd be nice.
Short-term goal, there's nothing we can do right now. There's nothing this city can do when the whole country is in the same position. And everybody here knows the combination of issues, as was presented a few weeks ago, as to why we're here. Long-term, I think we've already began doing it to a certain extent by requiring more, it's kind of a give-and-take. Many of our new projects or upcoming projects are specific plans or planned unit developments, where the developer receives, say, reduced setbacks, things of that sort, but they have to develop a higher-quality community with higher amenities. Now, we're never going to be, well, I shouldn't say we're never going to be, because we've got the Northern Triangle still that could drive us forward into that, but at this point, without the Northern Triangle, we're not necessarily a resort community, we're not a beach community, we're not Beverly Hills, and I'm not talking about that, it's not pie in the sky. But as I think Councilman Hunter's asked before, why can't we do certain things like Rancho Cucamonga or things of that sort? You've got Fontana, you've got Rancho in Ontario. There's completely different development between those communities, and it all starts with planning and design, as well as, you know, the cooperation of the development community. So I think it's long-range planning, and it's nothing that's going to be fixed in a year or so. The flip side of that, though, and that was my statement, is why go the other direction at this point? I think we really need to look at the situation that we have on hand and the vacancies that we have and figure out what to do with those. I do know, as I stated, that the commerce looks at rooftops, but it doesn't do them any good if the rooftops are vacant. So we're in a kind of a dilemma, where did we build the rooftops? Yes, we did, and some development is coming in right now. But with the vacancy rates that we have and the incomes that we have, I don't know how much commercial development they'll be able to sustain. On the last thing, back to the commercial, as you know, we've talked several years ago when we did the commercial absorption study, it showed, it indicated what is happening now, and that was four or five years ago when we prepared that, had a consultant prepare that, was that we were going to lose our regional share of commerce and sales tax to the surrounding communities as they built their own downtowns and got their own big boxes. That has occurred. And I know the finance director can give you more information on where we're at, sales tax, I'm sure, than I have, but I do know we feel it, I do know we see it, I do know you see it in traffic patterns changing, Bear Valley Road's a little less congested, things are being spread out, you know, to Apple Valley and the other side, the west side of Victorville. So we are following typical planning patterns currently, and I think we're doing what we need to do at this point. The Planning Commission has imposed design guidelines for everything except single-family residential. And I'm not here to state that we should do that at this point. Obviously, I wouldn't do it facing this way, I would make sure that I didn't have my back turned. But that is, you would ask, what is one thing that you could do? Obviously, in the future, when things are good and the developers are interested in building a higher-quality home or can afford to, that might be something to look at. I think it has, you have seen the difference with the commercial, the industrial, and the multifamily design guidelines that have been imposed and the projects that have been constructed over the last couple of years. That's another thing that we can deal with two years from now or so.
Well, I think, you know, when you say affordable housing, some people think, you know, they think it's bad. I don't think it is. I think that everybody that, the hard-working individual or families, should be entitled to a home, you know. And, you know, it doesn't have to be that upscale, maybe they can't afford that, but certainly there's got to be a level they can move into a home and own their own home. So I don't think it's bad.
Other questions or comments from members of the council? One last one from me. This is not a comment that I think was necessarily attributable to you. I saw it in these materials somewhere, and I've heard this comment before, when somebody in the community will press me for, why aren't we getting a company, or a Macy's, or Nordstrom's, or a Trader Joe's, or whatever it may be? And I come back and talk to staff, what I'm frequently told is that they don't necessarily look at the rooftops, that they look at the demographics in terms of education first and probable disposable income second. And I ask, well, why wouldn't it be the reverse? And I've been told it's because the people who do the demographics for those types of retail outlets have tracking numbers that show the higher level of education, the assumed discretionary income, and that that's what will support a decision to locate in any particular community. As a planner, could you just give us a minute or two on that?
Well, that I have found to be true. And I did make the comment about Trader Joe's and Nordstrom in a little flippant--
Made my wife happy.
A little bit. It was a little flippant in that I stated something to the effect of, you know, just ask Trader Joe Nordstrom, speaking to that same point. Yes, I don't know whether I stated in that email about education, but I think that education, obviously, provides some consistency of income down the road. And when stores of that type are looking for a home, they're looking for a permanent base, and they're looking for continued income coming through. So it is education, it is income, and those stores, depending on the nature of them, Trader Joe's cannot take as large of a radius as a Nordstrom can, which is regional. There's other things that can be done, of course. I know we're spending money, because they've done some, the commercial industry has done some studies, license plate studies down the hill at Victoria Gardens, and it shows there's a large population of here going down there and spending money. Now, how constant that income up here is going to be is another thing. Were they people coming up during the boom that are making a lot of money and have now moved on? Or, you know, or their industries have been hit hard and they're cutting back? Or are they higher-end professionals that aren't being hit as hard and will continue to spend that money? And that's what those stores need to base it on. A simple example is up here with our hotel building. Our hotel building has been booming. It's not because more people were coming to vacation out here, not by any means. We were supporting the building industry and the development industry. We're going to have to look at that over the next year and see what happened, because I think that we're probably going to be facing a vacancy rate with hotels there also. Now, if you go to Santa Barbara or Palm Springs and you look at their hotel rates, they're not going to change. Those are people with higher education levels, with professional jobs, that still have disposable income even when everybody else has left town. And I guess that's the sustainability argument. Are we going to be somebody who takes advantage of every boom and just builds for the boomers and houses all of the builders and their teams flying out here to build industry? Or are we going to look for some long-term sustainability and a long-term sales term base and a long-term, you know, income for the community? Those are decisions that this council needs to look at, and I know you've been through this before in the nineties, and we hit a boom, and you're experienced in both. The tide's going to come and go. Cities that can withstand the drought the best are the ones with the constant economy, which has a lot to do, not just with the jobs you're building at the base, all of those things are great, and that's good industry, but also with the education and the income level of the rest of the community and professional offices. Professional offices has been a concern. We're building them here, but they lay empty right now. We don't have the professionals to build, to fill up Civic Center, as you well know.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to follow up on a comment you just made--
Certainly.
If you don't mind. Having been on the California Grocers Association Board of Directors, my next-door neighbor, and when I said in my meetings, was an executive from Trader Joe's. And I asked him the question of why Palmdale Lancaster got a Trader Joe's and Victorville didn't, because I kind of equate both of them the same. And it's exactly what we've just brought up. Their analysis is of education and income levels, and with education typically comes higher income levels. Palmdale Lancaster has many, many more engineers per capita than we do. They have a higher education level. They have a lot of educated people who live there, work either down in LA or at the functions over there, and that's the reason that store went there, is because of that reason. And I think we have to keep that in mind, because we are, as Bill said, we're not constant in where we're going. And it's the same thing with Macy's, Nordstrom's, or anybody else. They do come here and look at that. Where are we education-wise? Where are we income-wise? That's why we have ninety-nine-cent stores going in, because we don't have that education and/or income level. And we need to look at that, so.
Other questions or comments? Bill, one final. I don't want to put you on the spot to speak for your colleagues at the department head level, but there seems to be an underlying current. I look at Sean's comments, Chief Becker's comments, Keith Metzler's comments, Reggie Lamson's comments. There seems to be an underlying subtle suggestion from a public policy standpoint that the council needs to address whether or not it wants to continue to be primarily the entry-level residential community for the balance of the Victor Valley, or whether it wants to, from a public policy standpoint, begin to implement procedures and regulations that would hopefully start a trend away from being just an affordable housing residential community into something beyond that. Is that a fair characterization of where you all seem to be coming from?
I think so, and for different reasons. From a selfish viewpoint, for myself and staff, probably, the more affordable community takes a lot more services. You're looking at police, you're looking at code enforcement, you're looking at the ordinances that we've written, or that the council has produced in the last few years requires enforcement, and a lot of staff are out there enforcing those communities. And to tell you the truth, they do take a lot more enforcement, they cost more, and the return is less for the reasons we just discussed, if you go for higher education and higher income. Having said that, there should be a place for both. We should just look and see if we've tipped the balance in one direction, and if we have, it may be the wrong direction that we've tipped the balance in. And I think that covers economics. I think that may cover some of fire concerns, our code enforcement, police, things of that sort. I definitely would agree with that statement, that that seems to be the general undertone of those general comments that were made.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just an observation of what you just said. Staff, I know we've talked about the jet train coming and everything else, and this city's going to double in size in the next decade to fifteen years, and it's all going to be up north towards Barstow in the freeway corridor there, totally empty land. And being master-planned as we speak, yourself and the Las Vegas group and everybody else involved in that process, they're talking about a lot of high-end residence, a lot of high-end development, golf courses and everything else. Victorville is not going to be that entry-level spot on the freeway that we've had for all these decades now. It appears to me that we have the potential in the next decade here to be a totally different community, where if you look at the Victor Valley, most people would probably think that of Apple Valley is that--
Right.
Beverly Hills of the area, you know? If you want to live in a nice home, you go over to Apple Valley, and there's a few, even in Hesperia in this neighborhood. But the fact is that the hardcore, you know, blue-collar workers are right here in Victorville. Well, they will be in Victorville, and they will be at the airport, but we've got an immense growth potential over here, and that activity needs to be encouraged. And the only way it's going to be encouraged is generally, we've got to begin to upgrade ourselves as an entry-level community versus a little bit higher level. So I respect that opinion, and it's coming, and we see it now, and shame on us, sitting at this council, if we don't recognize that role and some ways accommodate this new vision that's coming at us.
Anybody else?
Million-dollar homes are going to be there.
Thank you.
I just have one comment. It may be a stupid doggone way, I need to. It may be a stupid question, but it's been on my mind. There was a small cul-de-sac in our neighborhood that had five empty homes, and all of a sudden, people are moving in, but the neighbor found out that they were all Section Eight. Now, that doesn't help us in any way as far as, is there any way that we can, you're smiling at me. Is there any way that we can kind of control this or have some handle on it where we don't have five Section Eight homes in a cul-de-sac?
I am not a specialist in Section Eight at all, and obviously, the attorney's gone back and forth and has their own programs and ways. I still believe that the higher, obviously, the higher price, the property, the less opportunity there is for that to occur. The only way to drive the price up in this market where land is free and we're in the middle of a desert with, you know, dirt everywhere, is to increase the development and the amenities, which we are doing, and the development, and the DIA, I give them credit, and the developers have done, to a certain extent. Most of them have driven it themselves to where we didn't require to have single-family design guidelines, like the barracks on 395 that developed ten years ago. We still have some of those things, but the developers have done their share in pulling up the standards. That's just from a planning perspective and from our take. The other thing is to offer more in community amenities, and not to just, not doing this just for the sake of John Gargan, but higher-quality community amenities, obviously, also increase the desire to live in that community. Recreational opportunities, as well as commercial development, things of those sort to a higher degree, will also entice people and bring in and raise the property values.
Anybody else? Thank you, Bill. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Next speaker would be John Gargan, Director of Community Services, Park and Recreation, to answer the question regarding a potential cut to development impact fees relating to park and recreation facilities and public buildings.
Mayor, council? In regards to the question that was brought up last time, no, there is no legal requirement to have, you know, fees associated for the development of parks, but according to the, you know, the National Recreation and Park Association, the industry standard is three acres per thousand in population, in parks land. And matter of fact, they're even trying to push that up to five. And right now, you know, our standard, we've set it up at three acres per thousand, as we put that into our master plan. But even with that, and where we currently stand, we service one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand people-- we currently stand, we service 120,000 people. My park and recreation section does. That equates to 360 acres that we need. Currently, we have 193 acres. And even with the groundbreaking tomorrow for the new park, that'll add 17 acres. That brings us to 210. That creates a delta of 150 acres. And over 50 of the developed acres that we have now are Rockview Nature Park. They don't have fields, you know, they're not programmable as far as actual sports and those type of entities. And so with that, that puts us anywhere, if you want to talk about program fields, that puts us at 1.3 acres per thousand that are, you know, fully developed. And if you count the nature park, that puts us at 1.75 currently. That puts us in the lower half in California of all the cities of what they offer, their constituents. And California Park and Recreation Society, you know, has stated that, you know, when you have more parks and more recreation programs, they've got numbers that show, and Bill referred to them, you have higher property values and you have lower crime rates because of the fact. And as we continue to develop, and we sort of, and we have all our industries come up, and we have less and less commuters going down over the hill, and people are able to spend time here with their families, they want a better quality of life. You know, those issues are going to become important. And in turn, they're going to want to have the amenities that can, to raise that quality of life. And that's why we have the need to have these parks. And like I said, right now, we are way behind. We have no way of making those up. And even if, might add that, some cities, like I think Roseville has nine acres per thousands with their demand, and a lot of others have seven and five. But there is a legal requirement that no more than three acres per thousand can be attributed to developmental impact fees. And that's what we have accepted as our standard here in the city. So the other cities that do require more, then they find a way, they have to find other ways to develop those areas.
John, could you amplify a little bit of what you mean by, there is a legal requirement that you not go above three, if I understood you correctly? And so that's where we've established our law?
Well, the Quimby Act says that you cannot charge more, the developers or any developmental impact fees, no more than three acres per thousand, fees for that. And so, and that has been, that was something we just have attained. Okay, we know we can't charge any more than that. And we are so, we've always been down in the less than two acres per thousand since I've been involved with the city and trying to bring that up. And in my master plan that was accepted, we established three acres per thousand, something that was attainable. But it's going to take a lot of work because of the fact that, over the years, the fees never accounted to be able to build the parks, you know, to satisfy the growth in the population. And by law, we cannot go back and try to get that and recoup that money. It just won't allow us to do it. So that's why it's imperative that we continue to at least stay on par for the growth that continues to come in. And then we're going to have to find other methods to try to increase and get that average back up. And that's why, in our master plan, we've always, to try to make where the parks are serviceable to all members of the community, we've stated that, you know, minimum 10 acres in a park in order to be able to trade off for, you know, DIF fees and give them credit, like I said, is to serve the community as a whole. And I know some, there's been a push, really trying to get these mini parks put in that are no more than the equivalent of one or two lots in a housing tract. But those are only going to serve the surrounding houses there. And then they also become a drag on us to have to go out and maintain them, to when they're not, we're not getting the bang for the buck, the money that we have to put into them. They're not servicing everybody and satisfying the needs that are out there for more playing fields, for whether it be the soccer groups, the Little League, the football, you know, the courts, basketball courts, volleyball courts, any of those other type of amenities. And now, we have put into our master plan that we do allow those in, if a developer will in turn pay for the improvements, and then they have to find a funding source for those. So it's not that we're absolutely stating, no, you can't put those in, because, you know, they're trying to provide amenities for their surrounding homes. But the fact remains, they need to find a funding source, and that usually goes into an assessment district. That's the reason that we have those right now. As you can see, even with the completion of Sunset Ridge Park in another year, that'll give us 210 acres of parkland with a need of, currently, right now, of about 360. A quite a delta.
Questions or comments from members of the council?
John, this park, we just, it's going to be under construction, or is under construction. Do we have the DIF fees collected for that? Or is that like your projection like Sean was talking about, where you?
No, right, I have the fees. The fees, because of the total package that we have, and we set those up. We, you know, originally, there was the RSAs, I guess it was, the areas where you could only spend the money where it was collected. And, you know, because we've had people in there saying, what's the, you know, how come you should have done this years ago? Well, I went back and I looked at it. If there hadn't have been the merging, and where all the service areas could go together to form one big pot, they still wouldn't be getting their park, because they still haven't paid the equivalent of what needed, you know, to pay for this. But yes, they're, to say, have we collected the fees just for that? No, but we have in our pot money to be able to pay for that. But that's all part of the entire program with all the projects that we have on that. And so we've just sort of taken a pecking order of what was in the queue, ready to come up. And so we developed, you know, Mesa Linda, and then we went to Mojave Vista. Now, this is the next one. And we still have others that are in that, that we're going to have to in turn wait for the pot to build back up in order to build those that are currently in the DIF study.
The golf course is built the same way then, from then?
Yes.
Not from a specific?
Right. Correct.
Councilman Cabralis, the other part of the facilities that falls under this portion of the development impact fees, there's parks, but then also there's facilities, which in essence are buildings. And that is the area where we have always been extremely deficient in terms of cash flow coming in. And so we are building those facilities in a rear, Fire Department particularly, because we simply are under legal requirements. As soon as our population expands and housing develops to the west, we have to build more fire stations. So we are constantly building those fire stations prior to the funding being available. I think we're breaking ground on a fire station today. There is not funding available. In fact, we're already in the hole on the last fire station that we built. So that area of our development impact fees is always, cash-flow-wise, very negative.
Other questions or comments?
John, I have two. And I don't know whether you've done any analysis or study in, kind of an unfair question, but we delayed implementation of DIF fees the last go-around. And I think everybody recognized that both during the period of the delay, we were not obviously collecting whatever the increase might be. And then the increase that was finally adopted was not at the level that staff had requested or suggested was appropriate. Just as to parks and facilities, do you have any estimate of what the, how to quantify the shortfall that has occurred and is occurring today as we continue to delay implementation of what was to be an automatic increase at the first of the year? It's rough numbers.
Well, if I just took the acreage alone, that we haven't been able to develop because the fees were not there, you would be looking at a shortfall of probably well over, you know, $300 million.
$300 million?
Yes. Oh, take that back.
That's the total efficiency in relation to what is recommended.
Right. Right. That would be over the whole time, so 100.
Actually have versus the three?
Or no, take that back. I got to divide that again by three. Okay, so we're probably looking, if we're talking just parks alone, we're probably looking between 50 to $60 million in parks. But then also, there's recreational facilities that haven't been built, you know, such as the Hook Community Center or something along the lines of that. We're probably looking at a total of about $100 million to meet the needs of the city right now.
If you added to that the facility side, as Mr. Roberts just mentioned, using fire stations as an example.
Well, yeah. And continue, there's going to be need for increased police, substations, courtyard, you know, satellite courtyards. We're probably looking in another 20 million or so, 20, 25 million. And then, like I said, we've taken on the library operations. There's a recommendation for libraries is, I believe, one square, let's see what, I can't remember what it was. The recommendation for our population currently is that we should have 50-some thousand square feet of library space right now for the population that we have. We have a little over 8,000 square feet. So we have a delta already of over 40,000 square feet in library space. Yeah, so.
Would it be possible between now and the next time that we discuss this, which could be a few days, or, could you spend a little time trying to show graphically or statistically what the shortfall is in rough numbers because of our continuing postponement of dealing with this issue?
Okay.
The last question I have, it's been suggested to me by more than one builder, that our fees, our DIF fee associated with parks is astronomically high and in no comparison to any other community. So, you know, I don't know whether you can answer, or at least partially address that off the top of your head, but I'd be curious to know your response to that, at least in comparison to our sister cities of Apple Valley and Hisperia. And secondly, as a caveat to that question, the question was posed to me, would you, as a city, allow me, as a developer, to build the park and simply give it to you in a completed sense? Because I can do it for about 50 cents on the dollar.
Well, this issue had come up in regards to them building it. We had tried to work with a developer prior to that to develop Sunset Ridge Park that breaks ground tomorrow in lieu of the trade-off. But the fact is, law does not allow us to do that anymore. It used to in the past, there was, where they could do that. But if they're going to do it, they're going to have to pay prevailing wage, keep the records, and do all those things. So that cuts out the cost right there. And they don't want to have, because it would make more sense for them, if they're building the track, and they've got all the equipment there, and they're doing, you run the grader over there, I'm graded, put in the curbs, gutters, all that. But they're going to have to keep the books separate and do all that. And they don't want to do it. Because I've already, I'd already gone to Andre in regards to that and said, hey, Ken, is there a way to do that?
I'm going to go back to Andre now. Does that situation change at all if we become a charter city?
Apparently does. Yes, it does. That's the one plus of why we want to become a charter city, because then it allows us to do that and work on this thing. But in regards to the cost, I'm not the one setting the price of the property. The developers are the ones that have gone out and bought up all the property and artificially inflated the cost of property, far more than what it's worth. And so the prices that I put in for the property were the ones that were given to me by the developers that I talked to, what would they sell me property for? And like I said before, if they all want to sign an agreement that would state that they, they'll sell me the property in the future, what they're saying, what it should be worth, then I'll be more than happy to do it, and I'll lower my numbers. Now, we have always said, when we put a number in the DIF study, that if it goes down, we're going to lower it. But if it's higher when we develop it, we're going to raise it. And that happened with Mojave Vista Park, it went up. But Sunset Ridge, and the new numbers that we put in, the cost, the bids came in, because there's, people were hungry out there. There was a lot of people that bid on it. The prices came down, and I lowered the price because of the fact that the price has come down. So it's not that we're stuck on there. We said we will change, and it could still even change and come down further if the number ends up being, and lower than what we're saying it is now. You know, hopefully the contingencies won't be as large as what we're, you know, what the standard is. And then we in turn can lower that price.
To add on to Mr. Gargan's answer to that, yes, hopefully with the charter city approval, we can deal with the prevailing wage issue. Secondly, it would have to be the plans, the parks that we have master planned. We ran into a problem during the 90s where small parks were being built within subdivisions that only served the residents of the subdivisions. And then the cost of maintaining and operating that park falls upon the city. That is not sustainable. We now have a master plan of parks, so yes, that could be done, but only if it was the parks that we have master planned. With respect to our comparison of our development impact fees to the other city, we will get you that information, although we need to keep in mind that it's not always necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison. Apple Valley has a park and recreation district that has its own taxing authority and receives tax, property taxing, that we do not receive.
Other questions or comments from members of the council?
Well, perhaps we could get Andre to give us the legal opinion that precludes us from doing today what is being suggested by some of the developers to build parks for the city, and also flesh out the way that that could be worked into the charter city concept. Because it is an issue in the community, and I think it's fair that we share with them whatever information we have. And lastly, if you could, just kind of expand your analysis. You know, the comments seem to be that the biggest hits will come, if any, in park, rec, facilities, and fire, because we've already committed ourselves to transportation, and we've already committed ourselves to police. So, you know, to the extent that you could kind of quantify what we've lost and what we would continue to lose, and how that number plays into the overall needs, I think it would be a very useful exercise.
Yeah, I would welcome the opportunity for them to be able to build the parks, because it'd be great. It's going to help them, first off. It's going to be amenity that's going to help them sell their homes. But also, it's going to be there when the homes, you know, are built, and the people are there, so it can be used right away. And it's just a lot easier for it to be done that way. So legally, that can change. I'm all for it. That's great.
Just off the top of my head, Mayor, I think there was a comment about maybe a 50% reduction in development impact fees, and under the constraints that there would be no reduction to safety or roads, it would require 100% elimination of the development impact fee for parks and facilities.
Okay. Next up?
Those are the primary issues, the package. I think the remainder comments from the department heads are more their professional commentary about the certain, the status of our city. I think there's a very excellent write-up by our Director of Finance, John Sullivan, that I would suggest everyone read.
I'm going to ask John Sullivan to comment in a minute, but if you have no other programmed presentations, I have a few that I'd like to direct to the department heads.
I just have some short comments myself regarding the Rose Institute study.
Why don't we get you last? I'd like to talk to Chris Stathes for a minute. Chris? Where did Chris go? He was here.
Pick somebody else first.
Bad timing. Then I'll go to Peter Sotekas. Where's Peter? You lost control, Mr. Roberts.
Quite obviously.
Well, and we should have sent somebody other than John Sullivan to find our missing Well, Yvonne Hester is still here. Yvonne? Please. You provided perhaps the shortest, most succinct comments, but in my opinion, perhaps some of the most profound. Really kind of talked about this underlying theme, if you will, of the more pressing public policy issue. And you make some comparisons to the town of Apple Valley and the city of Hisperia, and where we are, Emma thing. You are the public image, the public face of the city of Victorville. I'd be curious in your comments, just kind of fleshing out of your paragraph.
Will do. Mayor called all council members. While I am not a finance director, nor do I deal with economic analysis, I deal very much with the public perception and how Victorville stands among the other cities of the High Desert. Desert. One of the things that I was very struck by was that, as it has been mentioned earlier, that we are losing some of our sales tax. Victorville at one point in time was really the center of the universe here in the High Desert, if you will. But as we've noticed, our neighboring communities have begun to grow up and they have began to take some of that retail. One of the things that they are doing right is they are continuing to hold to their high development standards and to their development impact fees, and by doing so, they will be able to continue to attract quality development, quality housing, and when the time comes to put in the public amenities. Right now, Victorville does not have a large library, we have a very small library. Apple Valley has a beautiful library. Hesperia just built a beautiful library. We continue to read letters to the editor from our citizens who have concerns about the quality of life that we have here in Victorville. If we do not collect these development impact fees, there is no way we can keep up with our continued growth, we cannot provide those quality services that our residents are asking for. And so therefore, it is my opinion that the council needs to hold to your standards and be able to provide those kinds of services to our residents. Otherwise, we will see continued decline in our population's view of this city, and we will lose citizens moving to the other areas. While we do have a vacancy rate with, we have resell homes on the market that haven't sold, we have developers here in this audience who have vacant homes, and we have repos on the market. In my opinion, I'm not quite sure how I understand if we continue to build more houses, how, somehow that's going to stimulate the economy. Those people who live here, if they cannot afford these homes now, I don't see how they could afford the new homes that will be built. If we don't collect the impact fees, we won't have the services for our residents, and it's just a point of continued loss to this community.
Questions or comments from members of the council? On one last question, the town of Apple Valley adopted new DIF fees in April of 2007, and the city of Hesperia adopted new DIF fees in July of 2007. Here are discussions with your colleagues in the other cities. Do you have any sense as to whether there will be another round of DIF fee increases in the near future in those two cities?
I know that Apple Valley looks at an annual increase at this point. I'm not sure where they are going at this point, and I've not had a chance to discuss that with Hesperia.
This is not a fair question for you, but I would ask our staff when we have the next discussion on this. I'd be curious to know two things with regard to the '07 adjustments in Apple Valley and Hesperia. Number one, did the BIA protest those fees the way they have protested ours? And secondly, what is the comparison of their DIF fees versus ours, recognizing that it's kind of, you know, apples and oranges to a certain extent, because we are essentially a no-tax city and we don't have a special district for park and rec? But I think in order to try to get some uniformity in the comparison, that that would be useful information to have. Thank you. Well, we found the elusive Christopher Stathis, the guru of all technology issues in the city At least you think I don't read all of this stuff. You made a very provocative statement in the second paragraph of your April 15th email to Sean and Bill and John and Doug, and you say, "We might also want to consider asking council to adopt the full fee increase and then issuing a true rebate that is issued only at the C of O. This would allow for a short-term program that would only affect homes built and completed during the program, period, and we would not have to play catch-up later." That's pretty interesting. I'd like to hear more.
Well, Mr. Mayor, City Council, it might have been that April 15th is tax day, so I might have been feeling quite patriotic that day in terms of my duty as a citizen. Having been here 16 years, and one of my primary roles during that time has been to implement the plans that you all come up with in terms of how the computer programs actually process those and get those implemented. I do tend to have to get a fairly good understanding of the functional side of the project. And one of the things that I've noticed over my tenure here has been that we don't tend to be very reactive, or we're very slow to be able to react to some of the changes that do occur. And that's not necessarily from a technology standpoint, it just has to do from either policy or implementation standpoint. And having been on the committee that reviewed the DIF fees, I believe it was two years ago, all of the calculations that we went through really showed, opened my eyes to just how much, how much money a little, each little house can cost over that period of time. And then when you factor in all the other comments that have happened, that that money is pretty much gone, well, it is gone, once the water's gone under the bridge. My thoughts were simply that if we were going to implement something like this, was council's decision, that we make it so that we could be more reactive into the future, and that maybe that, as we move forward with these kind of policies, that we take advantage of technology and we take advantage of the flexibility of our systems to be able to do whatever it is that you want to do.
That raises a question then for Andre. Andre, is that, again, legal under the government code to collect a fee and then rebate it back?
Well, it may create some problems, because the key in collecting the fee is to have a legitimate nexus study that shows that you are actually collecting the fee for a specified purpose. If that purpose then goes away, which I don't think it does in this case, maybe creating some inequities amongst various people. Pay the fee and don't get the benefit of the rebate, a nexus study that you use to justify this place. I'll look at that a little more, but I think that could create some problems legally.
Would you take a look at it before the nexus?
Certainly, the key is, you know, you need the nexus study to show that you need the fee and what the fee is going to be used for, and that's absolutely critical to the analysis. So if it laid a point, you decide to rebate it, then I'd have to somehow connect the dots as to why, in fact, not collecting the fee when your study justified it.
Other questions or comments of Mr. Stathis? Thank you, Chris. John Sullivan, he tried to sneak out too, but found him. John?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. John Sullivan, Director of Finance.
What happens to us financially if we were to implement the BIA recommendation?
If a significant reduction in DIF fees was put into place on other than a temporary basis, then we would have to look forward to some very large reductions in our forward expenditures for parks and for other services. And I say that because our actual DIF revenues are apportioned between different funds, and each of those funds, separate funds, uses DIF fees in order to not just pay for costs that will be incurred a year from now, but costs that have previously been incurred that we are paying for now. So I would state that if it's a permanent reduction, then it's going to have, it'll have a small impact to existing projects underway, but it'll have a much larger impact to future projects such as parks. In thinking through some of the issues here, I focused on the marginal cost to the city of a single-family residential permit and the DIF fees that are associated. It's easy to see that one permit in a neighborhood that's substantially built out would have very little marginal cost to the city. The roads are already there, the sewers are already there. But if we're talking about large-scale development, that's where we get into roads and sewers and police and parks. But at the same time, the thought process that by reducing the fees, it would result in a substantial ramping up necessarily implies that it is going to be large-scale development in the area of thousands of homes and not just 10 or 20. So I think a permanent reduction in that would have, would be problematic for the city in keeping up with its building and infrastructure obligations. The other thing that I said in this email was, having been involved with builders for many years, as in the accounting world and the financial world, the financial impetus for a builder to suddenly ramp up is more so on the resale period for the home. Builders do not like to pay interest. They don't like to build a home and let it sit for two years. So to compensate them for the financial risk of not being able to sell the home, obviously a reduction in a DIF fee would be appropriate, because that would be $10,000 or some number that their cost would be much, much less. But in today's times, that cost would quickly be eaten up in interest carry, because we have somewhere in the range of nine months of unsold inventory in the High Desert. So my thought in that process was, if I were a builder, I'm not sure that $10,000 on a single-family residence would be enough for me to get in and build a $300,000 or $400,000 home, and then face the possibility of sitting on that home for the next 12 months or 18 months. Compounding that would be the prospect that if the home prices fall further than where they have fallen historically, my $300,000 investment could be worth $280,000 15 months from now.
John, you make, you say it here, "In my opinion, the DIF reduction or abatement will not act on the root cause of the slowdown in housing construction, as most of these factors cannot be affected by what we do on DIF levels." Could you flush that out a little bit?
Well, yes, sir. The root cause of housing contraction here is a number of factors that are both national as well as local: liquidity, crisis in the families, cash flow, lack of financing. To get home building back to the level where it has been, those factors have to be eliminated. That requires a stimulus much larger than a city can hope to ever impact. Our only stimulus, our only ability to offer stimulus would be to builders. Candidly, I like Chris Stathis's idea about a short-term program which would compensate builders and bring more homes to the area. However, I wonder how many people are going to be buying homes? That would be a stimulus that, between the city and the builder, but the real issue is with the general population. I'm not sure we can ever get our costs that much cheaper in the surrounding areas to create a significant demand for thousands of people to come up here over the next 12 months.
My last question deals with your comment that a reduction or abatement in DIF would have a direct impact on the bottom line, as we would still be required to build roads, et cetera. And as a caveat to that question or that statement, let me ask this question. We fund park and rec and fire out of the general fund exclusively, and based upon the fact that you and Mr. Roberts and I are going to go meet with the auditors in a little bit, how much capability, if any, might we have in the general fund to meet legitimate needs on a go-forward basis if we do in fact reduce the DIF? Freeze him.
If we reduce the DIF fees, if we look at the funds that are supported by DIF, those, a lot of those expenditures are more, are less flexible. We cannot adjust those very well based upon the number of homes that are being sold or constructed. Therefore, it would be up to the general fund to pick up any shortfalls in those other Such a reduction in DIF fees then would cause the general fund to have to pick up the slack in some of those other funds. Did I answer your question?
Yes, and I assume when you say that, then that we would be talking about redirecting general fund dollars from other programs-
Right.
-in order to backfill or subsidize this program?
Right, that's correct.
Has there been any analysis of where we would look to, in the general fund, to move dollars or redirect dollars from existing commitments or programs in order to deal with our obligations for fire and parks?
No, but that can be done.
Done by our next meeting?
Yes.
Other questions or comments from members of the council?
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, that, I think, covers all of the department head summaries and write-ups that I've received. If I've missed any, let me know. And if not, then we go back to you for whatever comments you may wish to make and a staff recommendation to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Rose Institute study looked at primarily two categories of funding revenues to the city that could be increased by additional home construction. The second one, which I will address firstly, is property taxes. And there was an assumption, which is a very reasonable assumption in most cities, regarding property tax perceived for the fire district, the park and recreation district, the sanitary district, and the street lighting district. And so there was analysis done of the per capita property tax raised currently, which is $84 per capita. And then that was applied to the Rose Institute study of an additional 273 homes. If one wasn't aware of the rather unique ways that property taxes are assessed and distributed, particularly in San Bernardino County, you would, might not know that every time we go to LAFCO and we expand our city boundaries, we also expand the boundary of the fire district and the park and recreation district and the sanitary district and the street lighting district. But the county does not expand the taxing boundaries. The property tax boundary of those districts remain as they were when the city was incorporated 40 some years ago, which is just in the core of the city. So all of the new development and homes that have been being built are not within the taxing portion of any of those districts. So in fact, the additional property taxes that would be received from virtually all of the new home construction would be zero, rather than the $84 per capita. The other portion of the revenue projected to increase, or that was identified as the sales tax revenue per capita, I, in relationship between strictly rooftops and sales taxes, more complicated than my understanding of those types of economics. But in, according to the Rose Institute study, the total sales tax revenue in 2000 city, for the city of Victorville, was $230 per capita. Currently, our cost of just fire and police is $243 per capita. So it costs us more to provide just fire and police protection per capita than what our sales tax revenues bring in. So even if you were to continue at the rate of growth that we have seen in sales tax revenue, you're still going backwards by about 5% just for fire and police. That's excluding all of the other services that we provide. There is a concern that there is going to be an erosion on our per capita sales tax rate, currently identified at $230. We are seeing very robust retail commercial development occurring in our neighboring cities. The growth is already, and development has already occurred in the town of Apple Valley. I think I mentioned reduction of traffic on Bear Valley Road. They are certainly capturing that retail activity in Apple Valley. Driving on the I-15 freeway, you will now see the construction of retail development occurring in Hesperia. There's a Super Target under construction. That certainly is going to cut into our sales tax revenues. So our per capita sales tax rate is going to decline, whereas our fire and police cost per capita not only is not going to decline, it is going to accelerate. We have our largest car dealer now looking at moving that operation into Hesperia. So residential is a losing proposition. It's just, it's not anybody's fault in this room, it's the way that the things are structured in the state of Cali- It's the way that the things are structured in the state of California. We think the numbers are going to get worse as our neighboring cities develop their own retail commercial development. And to accelerate, to accelerate residential development without a commensurate acceleration in job creation and commercial development within the boundaries of the city of Victorville will simply accelerate the speed at which the city is going into a financial hole.
Questions or comments of Mr. Roberts before we ask for the recommendation? Roberts, what is you and your staff's recommendation to the council?
Well, the staff recommendation will always be to implement the fees in accordance with the NEXUS study. That is what the state of California requires us to do. That is what the study identifies are the minimal needs of our citizens. We think we have eliminated probably far more from what ought to be provided from the city in terms of amenities for our citizens. We have identified to the greatest extent possible all other outside revenue sources that might be available to offset development impact fees. And so since the staff has no ability to influence policy of either the state of California or the city council, staff's only recommendation can be to implement the fee in accordance with the NEXUS study. Now, the impact, since there is very little development going on, the impact of eliminate, of deferring some part of the fee is very minimal. But of course, has been pointed out, we have undercollected, certainly for 12 to 15 years, the revenues that have been recommended by the NEXUS studies, and the result is that we are not able to provide the necessary level of amenities, fire stations, police stations, libraries, park and recreation facilities, that we need to provide in the recommendation from the people who do those, do those types of studies and in the professional recommendation of our staff.
Questions or comments from members of the council? Well, it's 10 after 10. I'll raise what I think to be the public policy issues. We're not going to go into, will not have the time to go into depth on the request for public comment, so I would ask the council, their preference, do you want to continue this to another workshop either later this week or early next week so that we would have some time before the council would act two weeks from tomorrow? Or do you want to have this as a workshop preceding the next regularly scheduled council meeting? What meets council's pleasure?
I think since we've asked staff to bring you, to bring us more information on different items, I think we should maybe have another workshop and also listen to the other.
Well, and I did indicate to Mr. Williams before we started the meeting that based upon the tardiness of getting our replies out to them so that they would have time, I think I'd indicated originally that we would have them to them by last, by the Thursday preceding the council meeting, preceding the DIF workshop that was scheduled to occur last Monday. So clearly, we're going to continue it. The question is, how does everybody's calendar stack up?
Want another workshop at the end, towards the end of the week? Or if you want to do it, I think it's better to have a separate workshop for the timing.
I'm looking.
If you arrive before the council, we might run out of time again, and so I think we need to have-
Well, does Monday mornings work for everybody? Oh, Bob, toughest calendar.
Yeah, I'm just looking. Monday should be fine. I'm disappointed we have to have another meeting. I don't know what happened, but I know we're making staff go through a lot of hoops and a lot of time, and we're spending a lot of money. I think we need to get this resolved, but if we need to have another meeting, Monday is fine.
Are you okay with everybody else? Williams, you've got three minutes max. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I've sat here and I've listened to your staff for almost the last hour and a half. I would hope that at a workshop that you have next, that it be a real workshop where that we can have back-and-forth dialogue. The documents that you all gave us this morning almost makes me feel like I have to come here and be an adversary, which is not the intent or the purpose of the building industry. In these hard times, we look at you as our partners in building. You are our partners because you get a big part of the dollars that go into housing. We have been, at your request, we asked the Rose Institute at considerable dollars to come up with a study, at your request, to validate some of the things that we think are, address the situation. But what, you know, there's some people who get it and there's some people who don't. They don't realize the hard times that we're in. You know, yes, going through these, some of the staff people say, "Well, in the good times, all these builders made all these big profits." I would challenge any member of the staff to stand up here and tell me what KB Homes' profits were, what Puget Homes' profits were, what Horizon Communities' profits were, what the American Housing Group's profits were. You forget, these businesses have to stay in business, so they have all the overhead charges that you have. When you don't have the money to operate, what do you do? You lay off people. I'll tell you what's happened here in the construction industry in Victorville and the high desert. We've got over 10,000 construction workers without work right now because of the conditions that we're in. And here you all are here talking about increasing fees. Doesn't make sense to me. In fact, I- Frank, your three minutes are up. You'll have another shot, and we'll devote more time to the industry's comments. I told you upfront, we could only go to 10:15. I understand. I just want to make these two observations. First off, I find your remarks to be offensive. I hope they're not representative of your industry. And secondly, don't misquote me again. I did not ask for a Rose Institute study. There are members in this audience who asked my opinion of what might be the chance of selling this deferral to the council, and I said you need to develop good, hard data from a reputable economist who could support it as an independent third party. I did not ask for a study, nor did I ask for the Rose Institute, and I'm offended that you would suggest that. It's 10:15, this meeting is over. It's continued until next Monday morning, 8 o'clock. Well, I'm just as offended.